Hi, good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to begin so by reading a statement. Dear Chair Hayes, as you know, my lawful appointment to the Guilford County School Board has been the subject of litigation, dubious legislation, and unprecedented invective directed at me, the Board, and its staff and attorneys. I am certain that the legislature has overstepped its legal authority in shortening my term in office, and I am able and willing to litigate the matter. However, it is apparent to me that choosing further litigation over the seat would further distract the Board, the staff, and the public from the important job of educating our children. Further, I would rather the representation of the seat be determined by the voters of District 3 rather than three superior judges in Wake County. Therefore, I am hereby tendering my resignation of the District 3 seat effective immediately. I wish my successor in the Board the best of luck in the important work that lies ahead. Sincerely, William Goble. I'd like to now turn to our Board Attorney Jill Wilson.
Board members, as you now in fact have an uncontested vacancy, you have received the nomination from the Republican Party of Michael Logan, and it is time to swear in Mr. Logan pursuant to the statute, since there is no other challenge to the seat. It is our delight, I think, and our honor to welcome back to our midst a former Board of Education member, Anita Sharp, who is here tonight to perform the honors. Anita Sharp first became a school board member in 1990, the same year I first became a school board lawyer, so we kind of grew up together. And Ms. Sharp served first on the Guilford County Board of Education, and then post-merger on the merged Guilford County Board of Education. She served on and off, I'm gonna guess, 30 years, Anita?
Twenty-five.
A long time. A long time. Don't feel bad, I was here too. A long time, and cares a lot about the operations of the schools, and has given an enormous amount of her time and talent and attention to that end. So I would welcome Ms. Sharp. And if you'll, Mr. Logan, if you'll come, and if you have somebody who will hold your Bible, they're welcome to come with you. And Ms. Sharp, you know the drill, so I will...
Yeah, I'll fall first. Michael, you need to be where they can hear you with the mic. It is my privilege and honor tonight to administer the oath of office to Michael Logan, District 3 School Board Representative. Michael will give his heart and soul to this system, as some of us have done for a number of years. So, Michael, are you ready?
I'm ready, I think.
Okay. Put your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. I...
I, Michael Logan...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
And the laws of North Carolina...
And laws of North Carolina...
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty...
Of my office as a member of...
Of my office as the member of...
The Guilford County Board of Education...
The Guilford County Board of Education...
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I...
And I, Michael Logan...
Michael Logan, do further solemnly and sincerely swear...
Further solemnly and sincerely swear...
That I will be faithful...
That I will be faithful...
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina...
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina...
And to the constitutional powers and authorities...
To the constitutional powers and authorities...
Which are or may be established...
Which are and may be established...
For the government thereof...
For the government thereof...
And that I will endeavor to support...
And I will endeavor to support...
Maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend...
The Constitution of said state...
The Constitution of said state...
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States...
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States...
To the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I...
And I, Michael Logan...
Do further swear...
Do further swear...
That I will well and truly execute...
That I will well and truly execute...
The duties of the Office of Guilford County Board of Education...
The duties of the Office of the Guilford County Board of Education...
According to the best of my skill and ability...
According to the best of my skills and ability...
According to the law...
According to the law...
So help me God.
So help me God.
This 19th day of September 2023.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
While Mr. Logan is signing his oaths, we have a brief closed session. I promise you, if you will scoot into the room, we can do it in 10 minutes. So if we could do that as promptly as possible, we'll be back.
We have the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, yeah, you can do that and then scoot. How about that? And then scoot right back, too.
Okay. Well, yeah, you can finish that. Because when we finish the pledge, we're gonna go into closed session. All right, we will now, I'll turn to Board Member Betty Jenkins to open our meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
If you'll please stand for the pledge at the wood for a moment's silence.
Is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me see it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and give advice and instruction to our staff and attorneys regarding the price and other material terms in the disposition of real property.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go into closed session. We won't be in there long. Okay, great, thank you. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we've done closed session. We are now at recognitions. And if you'll give me just a minute, I'm always so excited to do this, because tonight we will recognize our September Employee of the Month, K. Ron Williams. Will you please come to the podium? With nearly 10,000 employees, the Guilford County School recruiting and staffing team stays busy, hiring hundreds of new employees each summer and throughout the year. For transportation and other non-school positions, K. Ron Williams is the one who gets things done. And her dedicated customer service earned her the title of September Guilford County Schools Employee of the Month. As a program administrator in staff operations, Williams works with supervisors and new employees to ensure the hiring process goes smoothly. For supervisors with multiple vacancies, having someone like Williams in your corner can be a game changer. Williams was nominated by Mike Lee, Director of Fleet Service Operations, who wrote, "I am a new employee to the district and a director of a department with more than 40 employee positions and 14 vacancies." K. Ron has been my go-to person in human resources when I have questions concerning hiring, open positions, assigned positions, and employee statuses. I understand that most departments are short-staffed, but K. Ron has always answered my questions immediately on most occasions, and always within the day that my question was submitted. Her professionalism and dedication to superior customer service should not go unnoticed. I appreciate her willingness to go above and beyond the minimum, and I hope others can look towards her as a role model to reach their maximum potential in their respective positions. K. Ron is a great example of the best of what Guilford County Schools has to offer, the right people in the right positions to maximize our strengths in an effort to provide the best for Guilford County School students. Williams received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of September, your photo will be displayed at the district's central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Linda Welborn to read aloud the certificate honoring K. Ron.
Hey, K. Ron. Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to K. Ron Williams, Human Resources for Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s, September 2023, signed by our Superintendent Whitney Oakley and our Board Chair Deanna Hayes. So I will bring this down and present it to you. There is nothing better than having a prompt, knowledgeable, pleasant individual that will work for you and with you. So I know that everyone that has engaged with you must really love having your bright voice on the phone or seeing you in person. So if you would like to make a few statements, and then afterwards if you'll invite your supporters and your family up to shake hands, it would be great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being recognized. I was very overwhelmed to find out about it. It was a surprise, where the team certainly got me good. I would like to thank Mike Lee for the kind words that he said about me. We actually had never met in person, and so I was so surprised that he thought that much of me. It meant a lot to me. I'd like to thank all of the individuals on the Human Resources group. They come together to form a team that really puts employees first and spend so much of their time focused on answering questions and providing the best service we can to them so that they can in turn focus on students, which is our number-one job. And I'd also like to thank my family. My husband and I are GCS graduates and employees. My son is a graduate. He couldn't be here tonight. He's currently overseas on a deployment. And my daughter is a sophomore at Ragsdale, and she's here with us today, too. So thank you so much for recognizing me. I appreciate it.
Well, we would like to shake your hand and congratulate your family and any of your colleagues that are here as well. All right, we are now at public comments. We have a lot of folks in the room. We'd like to remind our speakers that you have three minutes. When you approach the podium, we would like for you to give your name and your address. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. Please wrap up your comments so that we can allow the next speaker the time and the attention that they deserve. So wrap up your comments. When the red light comes on, your time is up. If you agree or support what someone is saying, please demonstrate that by doing this so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted. If you have a concern about a student or a staff, please do not mention them by name. There are Guilford County staff here that will meet you on the lobby and will talk with you about your concerns. So with that said, our first speaker for the night is Tony Amos, followed by James Alagretto. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bishop Tony Amos. I live at 4040 Windstream Court, Jamestown, North Carolina. Good evening, Board Chairman, Superintendent, and entire Board. I stand here as a pastor, a member of the community, a member of DAS Organizing for Public Education, a member of Public Schools Strong, a father of two adult children who successfully graduated from Guilford County Schools, and now a grandfather of a first-grade student. I want to first thank you for your commitment and support of our students and our teachers. You have overcome much adversity over the last two years, and yet you've thrived to ensure our children achieve the best possible outcomes. As a grandfather of a first-grade student, like every other parent, grandparent, guardian, I want my granddaughter to get the best education possible. She is smart, witty, open to learning, and a sponge for knowledge, ready to learn whatever she can. I want her to have an opportunity to learn about the truth of her heritage and the systemic implications that have impacted so many who look like her. I want her to be free to be who she is without any reservations. I want my brown granddaughter not to feel like a second-class citizen in the school. I want her to have all the resources needed available to learn. I want her to not worry about her safety on a daily basis. I want her to have a quality teacher who enjoys being there, who loves children, and who loves working with young minds. And I believe that can be achieved with continuous focus. However, so much energy and focus has been spent by a few of the radical extremists trying to prove that this Board has violated the law, that valuable time has been taken away from the true mission of this Board. We've allowed one district to consume way too much energy. We now must put our energy and efforts into what matters. No matter which side of the aisle we may be on, we can all agree that the most important thing is our children, and they deserve our focus. We may have differences of ideas, and we all can agree that the most important thing is the education of our children. We must learn how to agree, to disagree, to achieve what is the best outcome for our children. In closing, our children deserve the best we have to offer. We shouldn't have to worry, they shouldn't have to worry about the cares of life. Their responsibility is one thing, to get a quality education, and our responsibility is to make sure that they get it. We need to provide them with the resources to make that happen. I applaud you again as a Board for your valiant efforts and encourage you to keep working to ensure our children learn without disruption. Continue working together for the common goals of school safety, school funding, teacher pay, reduction of teacher-student school ratio. And if we do that, we will get the best for our children. Because in the end, it's not about us, it's about our children, because children matter. Thank you.
James Alagretto, followed by Reverend Tricia DeBier. Welcome.
Here's some materials for the Board. James Alagretto, 1451 South Elm Eugene Street. Board members, congratulations on the start of a brand-new school year. I am the Director of a small grassroots nonprofit called Youth of North Carolina. Our organization collaborates with other youth-serving organizations from across the state. We are also youth development experts and advisors to Chief Justice Newby's Resilience Task Force. Our mission is to help minimize adverse childhood experiences, which are stressful, traumatic experiences that happen in childhood. traumatic experiences that happen in childhood. These can cause a significant physical and mental challenge later on in life. This information comes from a major study done through the CDC where they studied the outcome of adults over their lifetime in 10 different question categories, including different questions about physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, neglect, and bullying, as well as household challenges, including substance misuse, violence, divorce, and of course, mental illness. What the CDC discovered is that adverse childhood experiences are very common amongst people and that there is a direct relationship between these experiences and serious health conditions that face Americans today, including the risk of heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and the list goes on and on. The more adverse categories a person has and that they're impacted by, the higher the risk later on in life. Youth of North Carolina uses the science as a guide to work hand-in-hand with other youth-serving organizations to make a more meaningful impact. This year, we're hosting an educational summit on November 16th at NC State University, which is intended for anybody who works with youth, who volunteers with youth, and who frankly cares about youth. What makes the summit different is that its diverse programming and networking opportunities. I am personally inviting each of you to attend the Youth Resilience Summit at no cost. You'll have the opportunity to learn more about mental health awareness in our youth, the impact on media technology, trauma-informed care, suicide prevention, and many other programs. Details can be found at youthofnc.org. Keep in mind, it only takes one loving and caring adult to make a difference in a child's life and to help them build resilience. The Youth Resilience Summit is November 16th, and details and registration can be found at youthofnc.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Tricia DeBier, followed by Sylvia DeRosa Taylor. Welcome.
Superintendent Oakley, Chairperson Hayes, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Tricia DeBier. I live at 2905 Winwood Drive in Greensboro, and I worship and serve at St. Andrews Episcopal Church. I want all our children to leave school with strength of character that can endure difficult things and face hard truths. I want them to have hope in the future, and I think this is something that most of us want. In my tradition, in the Book of Romans, Chapter 5, Verses 3 and 4, it says that suffering creates endurance, and endurance creates character, and character creates hope. I see the truth of this teaching in my own life, in the lives of my children and grandchildren, as well as in many lives that have touched mine as a pastor for over 30 years. It's often the difficult times and the hard truths that open us up to new understandings of ourselves, our relationships, and our world, especially if we can work with the hard stuff in the company of those who love and care for us. An example, as a high school student, my son read an assigned novel which dealt with child abuse. I listened to him as the tears rolled down his cheeks. I suffered with him as he integrated this reality into his understanding of the world he loved. It hurt to see him suffer, but it became one of many experiences that shaped him into a man who protected the rights of all children because suffering is part, an essential part of our growth to full humanity. This is why I am so saddened and frustrated when I see that book banning is up 40% nationwide and that some states are legislating that no child should ever feel uncomfortable. An individual parent can always decide that a particular book is not appropriate for their child, but it's not right that some want to dictate their own standards for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia DeRosa Taylor, followed by April Parker. April Parker, followed by Reverend Darren Mitchell. Reverend Darren Mitchell, followed by Anthony Taylor.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Oakley, Chairman Hayes, board members, staff, and members of the Guilford County Community. Good evening. My name is Darren Mitchell. I live at 2197 McLachlan Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm the pastor of the Trinity Amysian Church here in the city of Greensboro, a member of a faith community, and a zealous advocate for peace, love, and justice for all members of the human family. And I beg leave to make the following remarks. I come this evening to register my concern over the dismal direction and tragic trajectory of partisan politics being played and displayed in matters that are not pertinent to the future of education and the well-being of our precious children. This radical posturing and blatant politicizing played out in real time is both disappointing and disheartening. Energy is being wasted on matters that have nothing to do with what is important for the progress of our children and school system and is polarizing, to say the very least. There has been some progress, and I do commend the steps made toward that end. Yet it is not lost on me and many that the gap between white children and children of color is widening. And to spend inordinate time unseating members of the board because principles, progress, and values are charged chosen over personalities, partisan politics, and polarizing, it is unacceptable. There's a split between Republicans and Democrats even in the district, and this is evident by the small margin of victory in District 3. It seems to me that the main thing is power and control, not the education of our children, and we refuse to be silent. Racial scare tactics should not work anymore and must be seen for what they are, a tool to divide us and keep power in the hands of the elite. It is clear that parents can ask their children not be given a particular book to read if they so choose. It is the law, but asking for books to be banned is unacceptable. Time and tax dollars are being spent by Republicans to prove the open meeting law was violated by Board of Elections to seat Mr. Goble. It was not, and their desperate vengeful investigation will not prove it was. This political smackfest must come to an end, and the work of education must be the order of the day and the priority of all of us. As a faith leader, I call upon us to summon our better angels and be courageous in pursuing the greater good for all who are residents and citizens of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you Sylvia DeRosa Taylor?
Hey, y'all. I'm under the weather. April Parker, I'd like to yield my time to Eva Golding, if that's okay.
We have to...
Sure.
Oh, is she on here? No, she's not on here. We have to, she'll have to be added to the alternative speakers. Yeah, but she's not in order. I'm sorry. Anthony Taylor, followed by Dr. Jennifer Shaw. Jennifer Shaw, followed by Isabel Moore.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Isabel Moore. I'm here as the mother of a fourth grader at Peck Elementary School and as a member of Public Schools Strong, a network of hundreds of parents, grandparents, and community members all over North Carolina who advocate for honest, accurate, safe, equitable, and fully-funded public education for all of North Carolina's children. We are proud to be here alongside members of Guilford Anti-Racism Alliance, Guilford County Association of Educators, and Guilford For All this evening. Over the past few years, a small group of extremists have tried to distract us from the real issues facing our public schools by stirring up manufactured controversies and cruel attacks. I want to thank the majority of this School Board for taking another path by voting not to seat an extremist bigot, and I regret that he has been seated this evening, to request necessary funding, and to center inclusion and equity for all children in your majority votes again and again. And yet I'm still concerned for my son's future and for the futures of his adorable and diverse fourth-grade classmates. Extremist legislators have passed a bill to give away our public funds to private schools. Guilford County Schools is likely to lose $11,281,812. What will be on the chopping block? Special education services, school nurses, teacher positions, sports, arts? Will PTAs in wealthier parts of town supplement their school budgets while parents at schools like Peck can't make up the funding gap? If we continue on this path, at what point will PTAs, even in the wealthiest parts of town, no longer be able to make up for the state's shrinking budget? We're facing a downward spiral. This is the real crisis. This is the real threat to all our children. Public school parents are concerned, but we know it's not too late. We're rolling up our sleeves and we're getting involved. We're coming together across zip codes and across counties. We know it is going to take all of us to not only protect but to improve schools for all kids. This month, hundreds of us across North Carolina are surging to our School Board meetings in about half of the counties, wearing our Public Schools Strong shirts like this one and the ones many are wearing tonight. Survey after survey shows that public school parents want to see bus driver and teacher positions filled, not manufactured attacks against honest history and LGBTQ youth. We are the majority. We are Public Schools Strong. We are organized. We are growing, and we have the backs of School Board members like most of you who will do all you can to make sure all children can thrive. Thank you for your service to our children and our schools.
Thank you. Kay Brown, followed by our first alternate speaker, Dreshanta Brinson. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Kay Brown, the current president of the Greensboro NAACP. I live at 5420 Sky Hill Drive in McLeansville, North Carolina. I'll come to you not just as the president of the Greensboro NAACP, but also as a parent of school-aged children, as an older sibling to a trans youth that is in school right now. I have serious concerns over what the state legislature has done with the Parents' Bill of Rights. And I will say, as a parent, as a black parent, right, as somebody who graduated from GCS, we will be fighting back on that. We will be advocating for the rights of all parents and not just for parents that are going through a level of white fragility where they do not want their students or they do not want their children to learn about the true diversity that is happening within our community. To have a state legislature say in 2023 that we can't even discuss the fact that people were enslaved in this country, we can't even discuss the fact that trans people exist in this country, is absolutely racist, is homophobic. If you supported it, you are supporting racism, you are supporting homophobia, and you are an enemy to the community. You are actually the true enemy to community, not actually the educators who have to go in, underpaid, year after year after year, as people fight in Guilford County over individual seats versus talking to the state legislature about actually doing their job and passing a full budget. Enough is enough. My sibling, as a black, trans youth, deserves to be seen by all educators, by every single one of you that are sitting up here. And if you tell me anything otherwise, as again, I will say, not just as a parent, not just as a sibling, but as the NAACP president, one of the things that we do is litigate. So I would urge all of you to take seriously, just because now racism and homophobia seems to be winning, that will not continue to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Dreshanta Brinson, followed by Monica Walker. Monica Walker, followed by Martin Harper.
Good evening. I'm Monica Walker, and I live at 608 Martin Street. And to the superintendent, to the chairwoman, and all the members of the board. Most of us want strong public schools, and most of us understand that meeting the unique needs of every student is possible with our attention and our support. The NEA's poll key findings cite a lack of funding, teacher pay, and school shootings of the greatest concern to parents and voters. Second, they cite most of us are concerned about pandemic learning laws, basic needs, funding, and insufficient mental health support. These are the things worthy of our concern, and these are the things worthy of our support as our school, our public schools, work to achieve them. Across party lines, 70% of people responding to a poll were favorable about public school teachers and only 13% unfavorable. The poll also highlights voters explicitly rejected extremist politicians running on old scare tactics. Most of us are ready to put our energy into what matters to students and teachers, and most of us believe public education is, and it has always been, a bedrock of our democracy. Do we have to read Mr. Logan's social media posts captured before he could take them down again? They make the point that he is out of touch with the majority of voters in Guilford County. People from his district have written and spoken about their lack of support for him. Polls show 70% of the voters reject the things he and his supporters espouse. No one worried about gun violence in our schools, no one worried about gun violence in our schools could support someone who posted a pro-gun position. Those parents of the 66.5% children of color that make up Guilford County Schools certainly have expressed their feelings about his attitudes towards their children, as have those who support LBGQ students. The GCS Board of Education made the right decision not to seat him, and it is unfortunate that he was seated tonight. The majority of people in our country, our county, support you, the Board of Education. Time has come to move on to the real work of supporting and strengthening public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Harper, followed by Nicole Quick.
Good evening, Chairperson, Board, and administrators. I'm Martin Harper. I currently live on Cedar Springs in Winston-Salem, but I grew up in High Point. My church is in High Point, my relatives in High Point. I have plenty of people in Guilford County Schools. I am late getting into the story of all the controversy that's happened this summer, and I think that the solution is very simple. As a Christian minister, I remember clearly the Scriptures say, "There's a time and a place for everything under the sun." There is a time for controversy and conflict, there is a time for a time to be cordial. What bothers me is that when the default is conflict, then we seem to never find the time to be cordial. When compromise becomes a bad word, when that is at the seed and at the front of what I was willing to fight for in this country, when my daughter retired as a master sergeant, when my father was in the Air Force, my two uncles that retired in three wars, when compromise, which is the very bedrock of democracy, becomes a bad word, then we're all in trouble. I challenge you, Mr. Logan, I don't know much about you, but I challenge you, let me find out something about you. I challenge you to tell and prove that these accusations are wrong. I challenge you to say that the kids do come first. Lunch is on me. Dinner's on me, and let's find a way to help these children because, I mean, here we are marking the 60th anniversary of the March on Washington, a check still has not been written. that Martin Luther King spoke about 60 years ago. We're not asking for anything new or crafting any new ideas. We just want what the Constitution promised us, what the Declaration of Independence promised us, that we hold these truths and be self-evident that all men are created equal and are endowed by their Creator certain inalienable rights. These are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And it's a shame when people run out of retail establishments and don't pay for the goods that they walk out with. But at the same time, we're not going to walk out with good without the goods that have already been paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Nicole Quick. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Quick. I live at 4338 Clavelli Drive in Greensboro in District 7. I'm here as a mother of a recent graduate of Guilford County Public Schools and as a member of Public Schools Strong, a network of parents, grandparents, and community members across North Carolina who advocate for good, safe public schools for all of our state's children. I'd like to begin by sincerely thanking the majority on the School Board for working hard to focus on the needs of Guilford County students, educators, and staff, and for working hard every day to make sure those needs are met to the best of their ability. I'd also like to thank the educators and staff who work hard every day despite a lack of funding and resources from the state government to make sure that every child has the best opportunity for success. Because of our dedicated School Board members, educators, and staff, students with special needs, like my son, have the support and encouragement they need to succeed. As I stand here today, though, I am worried for current and future students. Instead of fully funding our public schools, the majority in our state legislature have devoured their time to interfering in the function of our county School Board in order to see an extremist board member who would focus on manufactured culture wars rather than the needs of our schools and students. They've delayed passage of a state budget to secure approval for casinos, while students across the state return to schools short of teachers and bus drivers. They've siphoned money from our already underfunded public schools to a voucher program for private schools, a voucher program that leaves students from low-income families behind, a voucher program that doesn't serve students with special needs, like my son, because less than 1% of the private schools in North Carolina have a policy for admitting students with special needs, a voucher program that openly discriminates against LGBTQ students because many private schools are religious schools that consider these most vulnerable children perversions. So I am calling on you tonight to continue fighting for strong public schools and for the best educational opportunities for all children. I know that in the current political environment, you find yourself under attack by extremists looking to distract from the real issues. But please know that most parents are on your side, that we want well-funded, safe, inclusive schools where children are encouraged to think and grow, and that we will continue to support your efforts, because our children are our future, and they are worth the fight.
Thank you. And thank you for our-
If children are really our future, if there is a soul in them-
That's okay. Thank you. Yeah, she was on the alternate list, and so we- Yeah, that may have been an older list, but- We- Well, we can wait to the end of the meeting, okay? I'm sorry. I don't know what happened with the list. Thank you. Thank you. I know. Thank you. We are now at a nomination to name the Southeast Guilford High School Main Gymnasium Basketball Court. So we're going to open up our public hearing for that nomination to name the school. And I will turn to the Chair of the Naming Committee, Debra Napper.
To date, there have been no public comments since the last, since we put the nomination for the naming out for the first time. All prior comments made have been overwhelmingly positive and supportive. There have been no negative comments made, no negative commentary at all about the suggestion for the naming of the Southeast Guilford High Main Gymnasium Basketball Court to the Fred Whitfield Court. So yes, public comments to that end.
All right, is there anyone here that wants to speak to that?
Christopher Scott, Principal of Southeast High School. I brought some friends with me this evening to talk about Mr. Whitfield and why he's so deserving of our court being named after him.
My name is Cindy Farmer Wood. I live at 309 Woodlawn Avenue. Thank you, thank you, thank you for letting us bring up this wonderful and phenomenal man. To know Fred is to know a friend. He is a friend to everyone and always has been. Fred has a lot of accolades to his title. We would be here all night if I continued to tell you all of them, so I'm just going to list a couple. He's a member of the Guilford County Sports Hall of Fame, as well as a North Carolina Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame. He was recently named one of the best CEOs in the state. Most people know he's president of the Charlotte Hornets Basketball Organization, and his best friend, of course, is Michael Jordan. And he helped to develop the Jordan Brand. He's probably, though, what I want you to know, the most humble person I have ever met in my entire life. He has told me over and over again, "All of these awards are not mine. They are for other people. They are the people who made me what I am today." And he says that directly links back to Southeast High School. That Southeast High School gave him the foundation that he needed to be the man that he was. He wants to provide those same opportunities for the next generations to come. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in just a moment from another speaker. Fred always works for the greater good of everyone, and I mean everyone, especially in his beloved state and his hometown. He's not a politician, but he worked both sides of the aisle during the infamous bathroom bill that threatened business in our state. He brought people to the table, to work together, to find a compromise that worked for everyone. He says that he is a person of people. He wants to work for kids, and he wants to work for everyone. His reach is far and wide, but he has never, ever forgotten his roots and the place that he says that made him the man that he is, Guilford County and Southeast Guilford High School. And that's why I feel it's so appropriate to name the basketball gym at Southeast after Fred. He is a great role model for kids to come.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Mabe. I live at 1011 West Northwood Street here in Greensboro. And what I was asked to talk about with Fred is his impact on the city and the kids of the city. He started a basketball program called Achievements Unlimited. And he started it with one court at ANT. He was there for a year. Then he went to Western Guilford and Guilford Middle School for 14 years. And after that, he ended up at the Greensboro Sports Plex because he just outgrew everything around. He had professional basketball players driving buses to get kids everywhere. But I met him when he came to the Sports Plex, because I worked there. But he managed, while he was around for that period of time, in the 25 years, he managed to help over 10,000 underserved children in Greensboro, in Guilford County. And with that, he focused on the fundamentals of basketball, but also anti-drug messages. But most importantly, what he did was the importance of education. And he always said, "You can tear up a knee, but you're always going to have your brain. So you can't rely on basketball to pay the bills. You know, you've got to focus on the education." To the point that when he had professional players, college players, people from ESPN come in, they awarded all of their campers with autographed dictionaries, not autographed basketballs. Basketball came for the All-Star team. The autographed dictionaries that have everybody from Michael Jordan to Chris Paul to anyone in between, that was a dictionary. And that's what all of the kids were awarded. Pretty early into his program with Achievements, he also developed a charity called Hoop Dees Charity. And he started with dinner and a basket, I mean, a golf tournament at Grandover. And he was there for 18 years. And that brought in the money that he not only could bring all of these kids and teach them these life skills for a week of basketball, but he also did things like contributed to Hayes Taylor YMCA, contributed to the Boys and Girls Club, Black Child Development, to tutoring within Guilford County Schools. He, just in the last six months, has found scholarship money for two Guilford County students to go to local colleges as first-generation students.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on behalf of the nomination? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mike Worsham. I live in Cary. I had the, I think I had the unique distinction of knowing Fred almost 50 years. In fact, we go so far back that when I first met him, I lived in West Virginia and just met him at a basketball camp, not knowing that a couple of years later we'd be on the same team at Southeast Guilford High School. Everything that they have said so far is true. Fred is one of the finest human beings that's ever come through this county or this state. He has no ego. He truly cares about kids, education, doing the right thing. His parents were tremendous role models. I believe they were educators, at least educators in heart, if not in science. Fred just represents everything that you would want to have in a son, a teammate, a friend, a... Just anything. When I was saying that I'd known him a long time, I think there was a time in Greensboro when I was the french fry guy at McDonald's near the Janus Theater, and found out last year that Fred was the burger guy at Hardee's just up the street on Battle Grappling. So I'm always learning new things about him, but the one thing that really sticks with me is his heart is just in the right place. And there are so many people that say, "Well, if I reached this notoriety, or if I had this, if I won the lottery, I would do this, or I would do that." I don't know that it always happens, but with Fred, he does everything right, and everybody that knows him respects him. I'm proud to call him a friend, and I think this is a great thing, and I hope it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in support of the nomination? All right, is there anyone here in opposition to the nomination? All right, then we can close the hearing. Just comes up for a vote.
And just, yes, to reiterate, I've had no opposing views. And with that, I will pass to our Representative Mustaian Bellamy-Smell.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion for the Southeast Gymnasium to be named for Fred Whitfield Jr.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I have a comment, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to say that I know Fred. I knew Fred's parents. And Fred Senior was the same caliber of man that Fred Junior is. And you never saw anybody more caring and gentle and wise than his dad and now, and he. And Fred Junior played basketball with my cousin. And, you know, every time I would see Fred, he's a very tall man. You know, he would lean over to listen to you. And he never let his head get into the clouds. He was, he's always been one that listened, cared. When we had the tornado here, his father had just passed, and I was at the funeral. And I went up to Fred and I said, "Can you help us?" He gave me his card. And then the swarms gave 10,000 passes to Guilford County staff, teachers, and students as a result of that. So even though he was there for his own personal grief, he still reached out and cared about Guilford County and Guilford County Schools. So it is an honor, particularly when you know somebody like him, to be able to support this nomination for him. Thank you.
Did you have a comment? I thought someone here raised their hand. I'd like to say, I just had, have had the privilege of knowing Fred for a very long time. I used to have a ball at the Achievements Unlimited camps. I worked for a guy in the NBA for 10 years, so I got to be involved every year because he came here from Charlotte. And so my kids got to participate, and it was a wonderful event. I knew Fred before law school, known his parents as just diehard advocates and fundraisers for the Hayes Taylor Y, and so much more. So I'm also excited about this nomination. So if there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right, well, that passes unanimously. We now have another hearing, and that is for the nomination to name the Southeast Guilford High School Main Gymnasium Basketball Court. Oh, the same one? Oh.
It was the hearing and then the vote.
I'm sorry. All right, well, we're done with that. We're now at the consent agenda. Is there a second? All right, Dr. Oakley? Yes, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of July and August 2023 meeting minutes, the Personnel Action Report, the renewal of the subscription agreement with Alliance Technology Group for Evolve Touchless Security Scanners, and the approval of the Advanced Teaching Roles Grant. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Sorry, Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Everything but the Evolve Touchless Scanners.
So you're voting yes on A, B, and D, and no on C?
Yes.
Okay. Debra?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. So A, B, and D pass unanimously. Item C passes by a vote of eight to one. We're now at reports from the Chair. And let me see where my reports are. Good evening. The 2024 graduation schedule, gosh, graduation schedule, is now available on the calendar page of our website at www.gcsnc.com. The class of 2024 will graduate in 30 ceremonies between May 22nd and June 9th, primarily at the Greensboro Coliseum Complex. High school students who are thinking about college should plan to attend this year's College Fair, which will take place on Monday, October 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Greensboro Coliseum Special Event Center. This free event is sponsored by Guilford County Schools, College Foundation of North Carolina, and Shift Ed. Many state colleges will waive their application fees during the week of October 16 through the 20th. I just want to say that again. Many state colleges will waive their application fees during the week of October 16 through October 20th. Seniors and 7th graders, do not forget to turn in your updated vaccination records by state law. Students in these grades must have additional vaccinations. The deadline to turn in your proof of vaccination is Tuesday, September 26th for students on the traditional calendar. That's a week from today. Guilford County had the only two North Carolina schools ranked in the top 50 in the country by the U.S. News and World Report, The Early College at Guilford and the STEM Early College at North Carolina ANT. Congratulations to The Early College at Guilford, which was ranked the number-one public high school in the nation by the United States News and World Report. The Early College at Guilford was also ranked ninth-best STEM high school in the nation, as well as the first in the list of best high schools in the state. Congratulations. The STEM Early College at North Carolina ANT is ranked second in the state and 40th in the nation. And Weaver Academy is ranked sixth in the state, giving us three schools in the top 10 in North Carolina. To conclude my remarks, I would like to remind us that September marks the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month, and we are proud to celebrate our Latinx students, staff, and families. and we are proud to celebrate our Latinx students, staff, and families. It is fitting that we will open the Sylvia Mendez Newcomers School, the first school in North Carolina named after a Latinx person during Hispanic Heritage Month in early October. Thank you. This concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, and congratulations to our winners from last week's Celebration of Excellence. Janita Rides was named Principal of the Year, and Jonathan Marine Mesa was named Teacher of the Year. Mr. Marine is the first Latino in Guilford County Schools' history to be named Teacher of the Year. Other winners included: Phoenisha Fuller, Assistant Principal of the Year; Jennifer Dunlap, Counselor of the Year; Latasha Riddick, Social Worker of the Year; and Kenyana Bethay, Rookie Teacher of the Year; Shayna Winstead, Mentor Teacher of the Year. We are honored to have these outstanding educators among our ranks. Thank you to Lenovo and to Guilford Education Alliance and their donors for sponsoring the event and supporting all of our teachers and staff throughout the year. On September 1, I celebrated my one-year anniversary in the position of Superintendent. I do want to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to continue the great work that has been taking place and will continue to take place in Guilford County Schools. At the anniversary event, we did announce nearly $7 million in grants to fund additional mental health services in our schools and to phase in expansion of our telehealth partnership with Cone Health to all elementary schools in Guilford County. When you add grants from earlier in the year, our total investment in this area is nearly $23 million. The High Point Community Foundation also presented us with a $100,000 donation to continue our high-dose tutoring efforts at schools in High Point. Our community partners are a key reason why we are better when we do this work together, and I am grateful for their investments in our student, in our students. School is now in session for all campuses. I've had a great time visiting 20 schools since August. I want to remind parents that good attendance is essential for good academic progress. Please make sure your child is in school and on time every day. Congratulations to Southeast High School for receiving this year's Hubert Humphrey Award. The school will receive $12,000, which it will use to improve spaces and tools for mental health and to promote good attendance. Stephen Bell, Coordinator of American Indian Education, will be awarded the 2023 National Indian Education Convention Educator of the Year. He will be recognized during the annual convention and awards luncheon on Thursday, October 19, in Albuquerque, New Mexico. We are very proud of Stephen and the work he is doing on behalf of students. Finally, in late August, I was thrilled to participate, along with many board members, in the Topping Out Ceremony at Claxton Elementary, where the last steel beam of the new school building was set into place. Student, staff, and families had the opportunity to sign the beam before it was raised, leaving a lasting imprint on the building. I look forward to more celebrations like this one as we continue this work. Thank you. That concludes my remarks, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Stevens and Dr. Wells for our 2023 Accountability Report. There you go.
Board Chair Hayes and members of the board, we are here to discuss our 2022-2023 accountability results. Our purpose today is to provide a comprehensive review of Guilford County Schools' accountability results. As you know, the pandemic is not entirely over, and our students are still feeling its impact. However, in GCS, our students continue to make progress at a steady rate. So today, we will share the impact COVID-19 continues to have on student learning. We will also provide updates to the state testing program, 2023 graduation results, accountability results, and a few district highlights. We are proud of all of the hard work of all of our principals, teachers, and staff, and are excited to share our results. The pandemic redefined the way every school functions, changing us to reimagine public education, or challenging us to reimagine public education. It's also important to remember that students who were facing inequities prior to the pandemic are still facing those inequities. Nationally, researchers are asking the question about when and how students will ever catch up, or whether it is possible. Catching up is how researchers describe what it means to recover the learning students lost as a result of the pandemic. We believe it is possible for students to catch up, and we are committed to providing the intensive interventions that are needed. We also know that before the pandemic, public education wasn't working for all students. New data from the NWEA MAP National Results from 2022-2023 show that recovery has stalled for most students across the nation. In fact, NWEA researchers called it shocking that upper elementary and middle school students lost ground this year in reading and math. They also found that achievement gains in 2022-23 for all students lagged pre-pandemic trends, and students of color remain the furthest from recovery. Recently, there had been several articles discussing the increase in chronic absenteeism across the country. A student is considered chronically absent if absent 10% or more of the total days enrolled. In partnership with the Associated Press, Stanford University's researchers provided a comprehensive report describing where students are who are not attending school. It was reported that an estimated 6.5 million students nationally became chronically absent during the pandemic and have not returned to school. The national average went from 14.8% in 2018-19 to 28.3% in 2021-22. They found that some students enrolled in private schools or registered as homeschoolers, while others were truant, unregistered homeschoolers, and there was also an increase in the number of families that chose to skip kindergarten. It was also reported that more than 30% of North Carolina students are chronically absent from school, nearly doubling the rate that existed before the pandemic. This remains a concern for our students as well. Just last week, the White House published this research showing the magnitude of test score decline and the extent of chronic absenteeism requiring an all-hands-on-deck response to pandemic recovery efforts. They go on to say that for all students to benefit from the full score of pandemic recovery efforts, they have to be present in school. Well before the pandemic, we knew that if students did not come to school regularly, it was hard for them to learn at the same rate as their peers, and that they were less likely to read on grade level. Research tells us they are also more likely to drop out of school. Sadly, since the pandemic, the steady increase in the number of students missing school has had an effect on their educational outcomes. This is true both nationally and for North Carolina. This new NAEP study compared students' attendance a month prior to the tests with their NAEP results and found that the more students missed school, the worse they performed on the assessment. The results were the same regardless of whether the students were eligible for free and reduced lunch or in elementary or middle school. Similar to other U.S. public school districts, Guilford continues to see an increase in the percent of students who are chronically absent. Though this rate has dropped slightly at the elementary level and remained the same for middle and high schools, it remains well above pre-pandemic levels. However, the chronically absent rate dropped slightly to 32% for all students combined and for Black and Hispanic students, while the rate remained the same for white students. The other category, which includes multiracial, Asian, Native American students, increased slightly in 2022-2023. Additionally, teacher absences continue to impact the need for us to utilize substitutes at a much higher rate than before the pandemic. We continue to be faced with increasing the substitute teacher pay rate in order to attract the substitutes we need to cover classes when teachers are absent. We are beginning to see positive results from the recovery efforts we have implemented and are committed to continue what we know is working. As a reminder, our learning recovery efforts are based on three principles: Expanding learning time, high-dose tutoring, and acceleration, not remediation. And that means making sure students have access to grade-level content. The fifth quarter we implemented has provided access to district-wide summer programs to over 29,000 students during the past three years. The program is set up to address learning loss and to recover credits. Our summer enrichment programs encourage students to explore new topics while at the same time preparing them to take advanced courses to be ready to enroll in one of our career and technical education programs. Keep in mind that we are using ESER funding to pay for the fifth quarter, and will need to generate funding to cover this cost if we want to continue our summer academic and enrichment programs. The cost to operate such an expansive program is about $5.5 million, plus an additional $700,000 for summer tutoring. As we have mentioned before, high-dose tutoring is an area we've prioritized in our schools because we know it works. From the '21-'22 school year to the '22-'23 school year, we more than doubled the number of students we tutored and tripled the number of sessions we held. And we're not slowing down here. High-dose tutoring is a game changer for our students. And since student success is our goal, we're going to continue making investments in this area. We continue with our local and national partnerships to ensure our students have qualified tutors and to strengthen our tutoring practices. Learning hubs have also seen significant growth, a 33% increase in student attendance from the '21-'22 school year to the '22-'23 school year. Early results show that our learning hubs are paying dividends. The more students visit learning hubs, the more they show up for school. And you can see that data very clearly here. And all of us in education know how closely linked attendance and achievement are. Thanks to Representative Manning and her leadership in securing a $2.2 million grant, we will expand the learning hubs to some middle schools beginning this school year. We believe this funding will provide younger students with more opportunities to accelerate learning and help us prioritize academic recovery. In conjunction with high-dose tutoring, these strategies are making a difference for our students. I will now turn it over to Dr. Stevens, who will share our accountability report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am excited to share with you our accountability results this year. First, I will share a few updates, accountability updates, and state testing updates. The state suggests using caution when comparing the results to prior years due to changing contexts as a result of the pandemic. All components of the state accountability framework, including the calculation of school performance grades, were applicable for the '22-'23 school year. School performance grades continue to be weighted at 80% achievement and 20% growth. Keep in mind that the weighting of the school performance grades is unbalanced, and GCS schools are affected more because of the concentrated poverty that exists in Guilford County, continues to exist in Guilford County when we compare ourselves to other large districts. This is evident when we compare the number and percent of schools in the largest North Carolina districts that were approved to be a part of the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP, program for the '23-'24 school year. As a point of comparison, Wake County Public Schools has 6% designated as CEP schools, and Charlotte MECC has 61% compared to our 74%. The number of schools GCS has participated in CEP is much higher than the other large districts. And keep in mind, this provision provides free breakfast and lunch for all students in the school. As you can see on the map, GCS schools with CEP status are now located in almost every area of the district, and we know the impact of poverty on academic achievement. I will now share the four-year cohort graduation rates. For most of the past 10 years, GCS has consistently had a higher graduation rate than the state and other large districts in North Carolina, and that trend continues with the '22-'23 cohort, which had a slight decline to 90.9, but is still above the state graduation rate of 87.7 in other large districts. In addition to the overall decline in graduation rates for the '22-'23 school year, we experienced a slight decline of less than 1% with our students of color. Even with the decline, the graduation rates for each student group remain higher than before the pandemic. We are happy to report that GCS had 10 schools with a graduation rate of 100%, and 11 of our schools had graduation rates of 90% or higher. We are continuing with strategies for increasing graduation rates, which include the implementation of learning hubs, which provides meals, transportation, and flexible schedules in all of our comprehensive high schools. Our student attendance recovery efforts include principals, school counselors, school social workers, interpreters, and teachers canvassing neighborhoods to recover students who are not attending school. As was mentioned earlier, we need all of our students in school. We will continue to offer a fifth quarter beyond the traditional school year for students filling a course, giving them the opportunity to improve, to improve to a passing grade in order to meet graduation requirements. And finally, we have increased the amount of student support we provided for schools with the largest declines in graduation rates in order to recruit students for summer learning opportunities. Again, while it is still too early to fully measure the impact of learning hubs, there are some patterns we're starting to see. For two years in a row, students who attended the learning hubs had higher graduation rates than those who did not. A deeper dive into the graduation rate analysis showed that students who attend the learning hubs have a 25% increased probability of graduating. So the data consistently show that our learning hubs aren't just a good idea, they're a good investment. These rates are an increase from last year, and as you can see, students who attend the learning hubs have a graduation rate that is 8.1 percentage points higher than those that did not attend the learning hubs. We see the same positive trends with student attendance, and it is important to remember that students who are invited to attend learning hubs have one or more risk factors for not meeting graduation rates, including not demonstrating proficiency on one or more of the state tests, a history of chronic absenteeism, English learner status, students with disabilities, or among other factors. While tutoring and learning hubs are making a difference, we must also consider the impact of ESER funding. Just last year, the cost for high-dosis tutoring increased from $3 million to $8 million because we doubled the number of students who were tutored, who were participating in tutoring and tripled the number of tutoring sessions. We will need to identify ways to continue these supports, the supports that students are accessing that are making an impact on learning life outcomes. Now I'm going to shift to a focus on early literacy. In reviewing DIBLES, which stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, we noticed that at the beginning of the '22-'23 school year, 50% of our students in grades K through 3 started the year behind. However, those numbers were reversed, and by the end of the year, more students tested at or above benchmark, as noted by the dark gray bar on the slide. Every student group had double-digit percentage point increases in early literacy skills when compared to the beginning of year results, when comparing the beginning of year results to the end-of-year results. Now we will look at the results for the Now we will look at the results for the 22-23 performance composites. As a reminder, the performance composite is the percent proficient on all tests and grade levels combined. 86 schools increased their performance composites compared to the 21-22 school year. We increased proficiency for each grade span, that's elementary, middle, and high school, and all student groups compared to the 21-22 school year. And 28 schools had 22-23 performance composites that were at or above pre-COVID levels in 1819, which is up from '20 and '21-22. This graph shows the steady progress we have experienced since the pandemic, and we still have a ways to go. Here's GCS compared to the state and other large districts. While our 20-23 accountability results are compared with other large districts in North Carolina, the playing field is not the same when we think about the poverty our families continue to face. Most of the trends have held steady since even before the pandemic that you see on this slide. As I mentioned earlier, concentrated poverty continues to exist in Guilford County, and our poverty rate is the third highest following Cumberland and Forsyth. Keep in mind that the declines in child poverty were impacted by the expansion of federal tax credit and the federal pandemic relief. With this relief funding ending, we expect that child poverty rates will increase. From 2018 to 2023, GCS has seen changes in the district's enrollment by ethnicity. The percentage of white students has decreased by four percentage points, while the percentage of black and Hispanic students have increased. Next, I will share with you the EOG results. We are excited to celebrate our EOG and EOC math results because when compared to the 21-22 school year, the math proficiency at grades 3 through 8 increased for each student group and at every grade level. Additionally, there were 63 schools whose math proficiency improved compared to the 21-22 school year, and 20 middle schools had increases in proficiency in eighth grade math. Our math recovery efforts are continuing to show positive changes. When compared to the state, we are recovering at a faster rate in math, grades 3 through 8 for all students and by all student groups. And our students with disabilities are doing slightly better than what they did in 2018-19. When reading this graph, the shorter line is better than the longer line. And this is an indication of faster recovery because the goal is to get to zero. Here's the math proficiency by grade level and by student group, where you can see the gains in proficiency rate for every student group and every grade level for 22-23. This slide also shows the steady increases that we've been talking about. When examining our EOG reading results by school, grade level, and student groups, we also had areas to celebrate. We saw an increase across grades 4 through 8 in EOG reading overall, with the exception of grade 3. We had 44 schools increase their reading proficiency compared to the 21-22 school year, and black students, English learners, and students with disabilities increased their reading proficiency compared to 21-22. Here's the EOG reading proficiency by grade level and student group. Again, we saw a slight decline with our grade 3 reading. But keep in mind, these third-grade students spent part of their kindergarten year and the first part of their first grade year learning remotely. For EOG science, we also celebrate the increase in proficiency for fifth grade science overall and for all student groups. Grade 8 science proficiency fell slightly compared to the 21-22 school year in all student groups, with the exception of our Asian students whose proficiency rates surpassed the pre-pandemic rates. Next up, we have results from the EOC assessments. We increased proficiency across all four EOC assessments. These include high school Math 1, Math 3, Biology, and English 2. All racial, ethnic groups and English learners increased proficiency in Math 1, and all student groups increased in Math 3 and Biology. Math 3 had the largest increase in proficiency for 22-23 compared to the other EOC assessments and surpassed the pre-pandemic rates. In Biology specifically, we saw increases for all student groups in 22-23 compared to the 21-22 school year. The 22-23 English 2 proficiency results showed increases with our Asian, black, and white student groups and slight declines with our Hispanic students, students with disabilities, and English learners. High school Math 1 EOC proficiencies increased in 22-23 for all racial, ethnic groups and English learners compared to the 21-22 school year. Students with disabilities had a slight decline compared to the 21-22 school year. As a reminder, Math 3 was added as a new EOC in 2018-19. Here you see all student groups surpassed the 2018-19 proficiency levels in 22-23. Next, we will discuss other performance indicators, which include the ACT proficiency for 11th graders, ACT work keys for CTE concentrators, and English language progress for all of our EL students. The overall ACT average score for GCS is 17.5, which is a slight decline from the 21-22 average score of 17.8 and is one percentage point below the pre-pandemic average score of 18.5 in 2018-19. It is important to note that while all students in 11th grade are required by DPI to take the ACT, the UNC Board of Governors voted to extend the current testing waiver for students applying for admission through the fall of 2024. This means students will continue to have the option to submit an ACT or an SAT score, but test scores will not be required for admissions decisions. However, it is important to note, students who do not submit a standardized test score will need to meet the minimum weighted GPA of 2.5 to be considered for undergraduate admissions into one of the UNC schools. All 12th grade CTE concentrators take the ACT Work Keys Assessment in an effort to earn the ACT Work Keys National Career Readiness Certificate, which is an assessment-based credential issued at four levels, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. This credential measures and certifies the essential work skills needed for success in jobs across industries and occupations. On the ACT Work Keys Assessment, 57% of GCS's 12th grade CTE concentrators scored at the civil level or higher, which is based on their performance on three assessments: applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. Students are exited from EL status when they reach a composite score of 4.8 on the statewide access assessment that's administered each spring. When a student exits from EL status, it means the student should be able to access grade-level academic content without a lot of support. In 22-23, the EL exit rate in GCS was 7%. That was a 1.7 percentage point increase than the 21-22 school year and within one point of the 18-19 pre-pandemic exit rates. Now we will talk about academic growth. Academic growth is an indication of the progress students in the school made over the previous year. The standard is roughly equivalent to a year's worth of expected growth for a year of instruction students experienced during a typical school year. Growth is reported for each school as exceeded, met, or not met, and is reported in EVOSS, which stands for Education Value Added Assessment System, the value-added tool that North Carolina adopted. For the 22-23 school year, 65% of GCS schools met or exceeded expected growth. That's an increase from 53% the year before, and that's also an increase of 13 schools. As I mentioned earlier, the current weighting for calculating school performance grades is 80% for achievement and 20% for growth. This year, GCS is not identified as a low-performing school district. We had eight fewer schools that are listed on the low-performing list. Despite the imbalanced school grading model, we were able to make progress. The number of schools designated as low-performing decreased from 50.9% to 44.3%. We also know that the Department of Public Instruction is still working on revisions to address this imbalanced model as they are revising the state's accountability measures to align more with the whole child as well as workforce development. We expect to know more about these changes over the course of the upcoming school year. Can I turn it back to Dr. Wells?
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. I know that was a lot of information. So I am going to summarize district highlights and some of our ongoing challenges. Here are highlights from early literacy and EOG assessments. Math proficiency has continued to increase for every student group and grade level, and we are recovering faster than the state. Reading proficiency increased at all grade levels for black students, students with disabilities, and English learners. All EOCs had overall proficiency increases. We are proud of our students, teachers, schools, and district leaders who worked extremely hard to help students perform on grade level and improve their growth. We are excited to have the low-performing status removed. And this year, our commitment is to continue to accelerate learning for all students, recruit, retain, and reward staff, particularly those who work directly with our students, but also the staff needed to ensure we can do all the things necessary to run a district this size, maintain safe and healthy schools, including mental health supports for both students and staff, which are desperately needed, prepare students for the world. Many of you were at the State of Our Community luncheon a few weeks ago, and you heard the president of Toyota say in so many words that they are bringing the jobs to our community, and they are willing to partner with us to ensure our students have the skills needed to secure some of the jobs in order to help our community thrive. Yet, we know the district is still faced with many ongoing challenges, such as racial gaps, COVID-19, attendance, mental health, concentrated poverty, transportation, and safety. And with that, we will answer any questions you may have.
Diane, followed by Deborah, Michael, Kim.
I'm gonna need you to say that one more time, real loud. Guilford County Schools' low-performing status has been removed.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you. That is beautiful. And the speed with which that has happened has been incredible. I did have a few questions. If we could go back to page 6. One concern that I have, and I wanted to know what return we see on this, is if we're asking our principals and counselors to go and knock on doors and try and find our students for us, what kind of contact does that yield for us? Are we locating these kids? Are we pulling them back into the school? Are we finding out where they went? Does this have... It just seems like a bit, it seems like a lot to ask of them. It seems like a bit of a safety risk. Do we see real answers coming from that outreach?
I can speak a little bit to that. So this started when we came back, and they didn't come back. Right? So like when we had the missing students lists, trying to recoup them. So what's happening now is schools have teams of people that can do this safely. Often, we engage our interpreters if we know that we need to do that, and it's not the first step. So there's a list. So like I was at a high school recently, and there was a list of 224 students who were expected to come who had not yet shown. And so next to each name, it listed the number of phone contacts, mail contacts, home visits, individual teachers reaching out. So really, it's this recovery effort. I would say at scale, does the door-to-door yield measurable, big impact results? No, but if one kid comes back, it's worth the effort to do that. And so, you know, but it's a team of people. But you saw, I mean, some of it got coverage when principals were going door-to-door to make sure seniors were staying the course the year that we were not there. But it's also all over our, it's not just here. Like there's kids that have, I mean, the data on truancy and the data on kids who are of age for kindergarten and not showing up. So it's not just social media and boots-on-the-ground outreach. It's anything we can do just to educate people about the importance of coming to school. So I would say the return is not like hundreds of kids, but we have been able to make some contacts and find out where kids are, which also helps our numbers in terms of making sure we have the right number of kids in graduation cohorts. But it's also how we're funded.
Let's see, on page 10, looking at the number of substitutes and the need for those. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about the bonuses that we're offering our substitutes with our ESER money for perfect attendance, even to the point where I've had people in other counties say that they've gone to their boards of education or superintendents and asked, is this something we can duplicate? Because it's definitely motivating. Are we working on grant money maybe to continue this past the sunset of ESER?
So part of our strategic direction work is that we're gathering, I mean, one of the big goals is recruit, retain, and reward staff. So under each, we're listing all of the things that we're doing and how we're paying for all of them so that we can choose the things that we're going to try to continue to advocate, to maintain. But we will not get $288 million to keep going. So we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. And so, but that's the work of these working groups, is to see what's in place, what data we have to support it so that we can narrow the list of what we prioritize, both in seeking private funding, state, federal, and grants. Good question, though.
That one was answered in the course of things. On page 52, with our ACT and work key scores, what kind of access are we offering to the PACT and the PSAT? I realize we didn't address the SAT here, but what access are we offering to those practice tests?
So we've tried different things over time. It's not helpful that the state is still offering the waiver. So we still have to give it, but the college application process doesn't require it. It requires a 2.5 GPA right now. So what we did was pay like an ACT coordinator to do parent sessions, evening sessions. Many schools hold an elective class for ACT prep. So different schools turn in a plan of what they're doing, how many schools are engaging with it, and what works. Sometimes Saturday things work, other times it's when they build it in as an elective. But I do think what gets measured, I mean, I do think that we're feeling some of it just because the spotlight's been taken off of it when it stopped being a college application requirement at all schools. But we'll continue to try to make sure that it's a priority.
I knew that, you know, in my experience with the SAT and recently with my stepdaughter with the ACT, that practice test, that pre-run, was very, very helpful. So I hope we can encourage our high schools to make sure they, you know, make sure we have an access point, and, you know, of course, if it can be an access point where they don't have to pay, that's always helpful. I know that the Duke TIP program provides access to free practices, but...
Thank you. Michael, then, Kim. Thank you. Michael, then, Kim.
Thank you for that report. Um, a couple of questions I would like to ask. One is the graduation rate. It is, students can take in a block schedule thirty-two classes? And in a regular schedule, twenty-eight classes, correct?
That's right, but our policy is a twenty-two credit, minimum graduation to match the state requirement.
Was it not higher than that pre-COVID?
There were different rules for different schools with different schedules pre-COVID. Since COVID, it's gone to the twenty-two state requirement.
Okay, so we have a higher graduation rate. Is it because students are doing better or because we lowered the requirements?
So I wouldn't say we've done a full evaluation of the change in graduation rate over time. We did see a slight decrease this year.
And, and the reason I point that out is if a student's taking thirty-two credits in a block school, they only need twenty-two to graduate. That means they can potentially not pass ten classes and still graduate, or ten courses. Uh, and I'd like to point that out. On the attendance, we, as an educator, if a student is not in class, an educator cannot teach them, and is very limited in what they can do. Of those absences, what is the excused versus unexcused on the absences?
We can pull that. It varies by month, and the data is a month after those absences occur.
Because parent contact on those are, whether it's the teacher, whether it's the school or somebody, why is the student missing school? I think that's very important. I know at one point, we did have a very high unexcused, a very high unexcused absentee rate. Um, another one was the ACT. Can you say for the public what the ACT, what is the specialty of the ACT?
I mean, typically, it's job readiness. So the ACT and PS, SAT over time have kind of changed what, you know, which universities take which score. But this is readiness for college, readiness particularly for technical skills specifically around writing and mathematics and the ability to apply those to real-world conditions.
And on the low-performing schools, we had eight low-performing schools. How many of those schools were closed?
We have more than eight low-performing schools, so I think you're citing...
Or eight, we had eight fewer.
Eight came off the list.
Yes.
None of them were closed.
None of those are closed? All right, cool. Thank you. That's all.
Kim, and then Diane.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think I was saying earlier how I was looking at the one from last year, the accountability report. So this is so timely. The GCS tutoring partnership, what does that look like for each of the, um, uh, identities that are listed here? Like A&amp;T, is that in-person? Is it online? Stanford University, what does that look like?
So some of those are research partners, and some of those are sending tutors into schools, if that makes sense. So like this accelerator, tell me the slide number you're on so I can be with you. I think I know the...
Fifteen.
Okay. A&amp;T is undergraduate students, and most of their work is graduate assistance. So they sent us, we pay their graduate assistantship for them to come and tutor our students for twenty hours a week. The Harvard partnership is a research partnership. Dr. Stevens, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these.
That's correct. Um, Harvard, AIIR, NWEA, all of those are research partnerships. Um, UNCG, uh, we pay tutors. I think, I'm not sure if that's graduate or undergrad.
It is, both. We have both.
Yeah, so we pay both for their, uh, UNCG and, uh, North Carolina A&amp;T. We pay for their graduate students to come in and tutor. Um, National Student Accelerator is again a, a partnership, research partnership. Where, so they're helping us to look at our data and determine the, eventually to determine the level of impact tutoring is having on our students.
For free?
Um, yes.
We're not paying for the research.
Okay. I, I don't see High Point University here, so are they not a partner?
They were a partner as a service learning. They didn't want us to compensate their students. So it's been, um, we've had lower numbers because it was kind of a service learning, learning choice for High Point Universities. Whereas we're compensating, and the university is letting us compensate through memorandums of understanding on the other two. They are sending students, just not nearly in the quantity as the other two.
Okay. In reference to the English language learner, um, ident, scores, how does that relate to our newcomers' school? Like, how is their data built in there or not?
Do you want to come answer that? Ms. Manis can come answer that. It will depend on the status of the English learner. Often newcomers, because they're in their first year, are exempt from testing requirements. But this English learner access test is given at, to different grades at different times. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, their, their numbers are included. So all students that have an EL label participate in both the WIDA screener to be able to be identified, and then the WIDA access test that happens annually to determine their level of proficiency on the English language. So they are accounted on the numbers.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Diane, and Chrissy.
Okay. Uh, thank you for this huge report that you have reduced down to sixty-three pages. Uh, my first question is on page nine, and it is, um, I thought I heard you say that there had been a slight increase in absences, right? Huh?
It, I mean, it went, we had a huge increase last year, and it's stayed about the same this year.
Okay, do we know why?
I mean, I think we cited some of the data around, um, truancy, fewer parents sending their kids to kindergarten. I think just culturally in our country, it's like easier not to go to work, easier not to go to school. Um, I mean, I really, like, there's like this culture difference post-COVID. Um, and I don't have like the data that says here's why they're absent. We've certainly tried to reengage and find out, but, um, our numbers look just like other districts like ours.
Okay. On page twelve, thank you. Um, um, what does our funding look like for this? I think I heard you talk about the, the learning hubs. But to do these, uh, five things, what does funding, uh, look like? And I don't know if you can do it on all five?
I can do rough. I mean, so like, learning hubs and tutoring, if we maintain where we started, was about eleven million dollars to do annually. But last year, we doubled the number of kids. And so just that and summer tutoring was more, almost six million dollars. So as, the good news is students are accessing the help. Like, they keep showing up and they want the assistance. I do think we have to, again, think about how we prioritize what we're able to do moving forward with the limited resources that we have.
Okay. So of these five, and maybe I don't, you don't, you don't want me to put you on the spot. Yeah. Okay, what do you see if all five of these are effective? But you can't fund all five of them. Which one, which one, which ones give you the best bang for your buck?
So, I mean, we'll know more soon, but right now, the tutoring and the learning hubs and the access to some, some summer program, and we just won't be able to do it at scale, are the ones that we're having the preliminary data that are the most impactful.
Okay. Page fifteen, um, have we, have we tried to get other schools? Or is it just that it works better with, uh, A&amp;T and, and UNCG?
We actually bid it because it's federal funding.
Okay, so...
So everybody's welcome to come tutor, but they have to apply to the bid. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and we also have a lot of community tutors that sign up to, to do this work as well. And some of our own students as well.
So do you have...
You gotta move up if you're gonna talk.
We do have undergrad students that apply from other universities that are coming in and tutoring, and they are applying from UNCG and other programs. We're just having more students from A&amp;T and UNCG undergraduate assistance. But we do have other tutors from undergrad programs.
Okay, but, all right, even though, would it not be just a good PR that we do, you know, kind of list those others so that there are students out there who didn't know?
Yeah, these are district partnerships that have an MOU. That's why these are listed.
Okay, all right, but I think it's important to say that other schools are doing it too because there may be some other students who are sitting, possibly watching our school board meeting, saying, hey, let me see if I can go do that.
Yes, they can go to careers, become a tutor.
Thank you. You, you got my point. Okay, on page twenty-one. I'm scared to ask this question. How does poverty impact? And I know, uh, Chairman Hayes could probably give us a whole dissertation on that, but, I mean, it's important. I mean, from, from your lens, uh, Dr. Oakley.
I mean, I've been taught for many years, but even when you control for poverty, race is the biggest outcome of, for students across any sector, healthcare, student, like, achievement performance, attendance, all of the things. It does impact, um, how, the readiness of students. So when we look at how students come to school, um, it, we do see concentrations of poverty in our community that do, that are at the same places where the food deserts are, that do impact school readiness and the skills that ki, kids come to school with. Um, we also look at those factors when we're trying to identify which kids to tutor. Like, we have a dashboard that shows risk factors, for example. And our students who live in these same hyper-segregated communities are the same students who need the, the most help. But this is systemic and over time, and I don't, she can, but those, I mean, those are, we see it all the way from the first day of kindergarten through the stage when they walk across at graduation.
Okay, but, but...
Oh, yeah, and, yes, the more, more teacher turnover, the least experienced teachers are at these schools that are in these neighborhoods as well.
But, but we also need to emphasize that, that all of these students who are impacted are not Black students.
No.
Okay, but see, some people think poverty, Black people, as opposed to the fact that, that the poverty rate, because if we got ninety-one of our, of our schools getting free and reduced lunch, that covers more than just African-American students.
Well, and if you look at the map, it's our, it's all over the county. Those red dots are the CEP schools, and the ones with the yellow background are the newly CEP schools.
All right, well, you know, my point is, is that you got some people who have, you know, colorblind lenses. So I want, or, or got lenses that don't see it that way. So I just want to make sure that we understand that whatever we're doing impacts on a variety of different, uh, students from all over the county. So even though the, the, the real concentration of poverty may be, uh, more Black and Brown, that, that's not all of it. So, okay, uh, question, uh, uh, page twenty-five. What is the average? Okay, maybe I'll ask it this way. What do you, what does your grade ha, average have to be to graduate? It's not, okay, then, this is the question. What is the average, uh, uh, grade average of our graduates? Because when you say we have ninety, uh, you know, what, ninety percent of our students who are graduating, but how many of them are graduating with two-point-oh, two-point-five, two-point, two-point-eight? Because those numbers matter as far as what they can do. So do we have any data that, that talks about what percentage of that ninety, uh, what is it, ninety, ninety-two percent, ninety percent? Ninety percent? What, you know, what is the, what are their percentages of grade point averages?
I don't have that number with me today, but we can certainly find that number for you.
But do you understand that? I think it's important...
I understand what you're asking. You wanted to know, you want to know what the average GPA is for the class that just graduated.
Well, yeah, and, and, and because if you have a two-point-oh, there are things you can't, you cannot apply for. If you have a two-point-five, then, or if you have a two-point-eight, or then, if you got a three-point, you know, I mean, and I, I think that's important because, well, just to get a piece of paper and you can't do anything with it. I understand we can't control all those factors, but we need to be aware of that instead of just saying, oh, we got a ninety percent graduation rate, not saying that's not good. Okay? All right, uh, page forty-two. Can we, um, can we recover the impact of the third graders who you said, uh, missed a, a year and a half? Uh, because you said that, that, that their being out because of, of COVID impacted on where their reading is now. Are we gonna be able to, I mean, will they at some point be able to overcome that? Or will that always be an issue for them?
So they didn't miss a year and a half. What they missed was that instructional time at the end of kindergarten and the beginning of first grade when you connect sounds to letters and letters to words and words to sentences. I don't have a crystal ball. I mean, I know the research tells us that, um, it's gonna impact generations for decades to come. I would also say that only half of our third graders were reading proficiently pre-COVID. Um, and so it's not like we had it figured out for all student groups then. Um, we certainly are starting to see progress. I think we'll be able to see third graders on the positive trajectory. But that's kind of why we shared that national research at the beginning, is that there are some stalls that are happening, um, particularly in urban districts.
All right, um, page six, uh, forty-six. Math one, have, where do African-American males now fall? Because, uh, I think it was in two thousand and seventeen, you know, we were, uh, in a crisis where I think the number was like, uh, sixty-seven percent of African-American males in ninth grade were failing math one. And of course, we took corrective action, and we did see, uh, uh, after two years, I believe it was, a stark improvement. Are we still there?
So this hasn't been disaggregated yet by race and gender. We've done race. We haven't done race and gender at the same time. I remember this board took a stand on foundations of math one and did slowly see some recovery happen there. That was before the state took out the middle school kids who take math one and the math one performance composite. So I think we have to look with the right lens of what's being measured, but that's certainly data that we can look into.
Okay, page forty-nine. Why does it appear that African-American students are lagging behind all the other racial groups?
I think we've talked about this for some time. I think even when we control for poverty, race continues to be the biggest predictor of student outcomes. Um, I would like to say that we have figured out the answer to that and know how to address it, but it's not just gonna be education that fixes that problem.
Okay, so is there, there's nothing else we can do?
I mean, I think there's all kinds of things we can do. We can think about who we're hiring. We can think about how we're delivering instruction. We can make sure that students in these hyper-segregated areas of poverty have access to high-quality teachers. We can make sure that our interventions that are showing promise are targeted to our students who meet multiple risk factors. There's, it's, yeah, we never look at a, a data set without looking at it this way.
All right, well, that's a concern, you know, the fact that they're behind every racial group and as much as, uh, twenty points, uh, behind, uh, white students. Okay, um, page fifty-three. Did we look at, uh, the fact that the, the, the ACT, what you said, are, are, is looking at work skills? Uh, a couple of years ago, I had asked, did we see if the, if what we are looking at matches what is needed in the workforce? And I think then the answer was that there really wasn't a, a strong coordination between workforce needs versus what we're doing, but you were gonna look at it.
Well, I mean, I, um, there was a study done recently, I think Action Greensboro, around workforce development needs, and they're saying things like ability to work on a team, event, ability to innovatively solve problems. The work key still measures applied reading, writing, and math. And so, I, I mean, I'm just stating facts about like what the employees are saying and what the test measures. I do think that's part of what the state accountability model is looking to revise. I don't think they've decided how they're gonna figure out how they're gonna do that, but they've said publicly workforce development is going to be an accountability measure in the revised state accountability model.
All right, I have one more question.
Okay.
And I'll be done. You said, don't make it long. All right, uh, on page fifty-six. Is the results that we're seeing, uh, uh, the, is this results the, a result of us drilling down on the schools that did not meet, uh, um, EVOs before, if you understand my question? I mean, the, because you, you... I mean, the reason, because you, 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 you've had improvement. Is that because we drilled down on those, uh, schools, or was, do you have any particular reason that we improved like that?
I think it's a lot of things, and we still have a ways to go. Like, I think we, we have to be worried about the forty. You know, I think we've hired some strong school leaders. I think we've adopted high-quality instructional materials. This board's continued to invest in coaching for teachers. I do think now that our organizational structure will help us do more of that drilling down. Schools have put really strong systems of support with targeted interventions and these standard treatment protocols in place. I think it's a combination of all of those things. If we can do that and get kids to come to school every day, then we can make an impact on the others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you. I don't have very many questions. Um, first of all, thank you again for putting this together. I love this stuff. I love going through data and sorting it out. And I haven't had a lot of time to be able to do it yet, so I'm really excited to get my hands on this. My first question is from page, what page am I on? Seven, about the absentee levels. Do these absentee levels include the mandatory quarantine that we're still doing for our kids when they're sick? You know, obviously, we don't want to be spreading sickness around, I get that, but we're also actively keeping kids out of school when they are sick. And so I'm curious what that impact is on these absentee levels.
On page seven, that's a study that was done by the White House.
Well, I'm sorry, my post-it's on the wrong page. Same, same question, but to GCS, sorry.
So yes, if a student is absent regardless of the reason, um, ten percent of the days, then they are included in the chronic absenteeism rate.
And is there anything that we can do about that problem with keeping kids out?
I mean, I think we'll continue to follow the guidance in accordance with public health. They do, we are able to code. They did change codes at the state level for some period of time, but absences are still absences in how the data's, um, extracted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And then when they are kept home, what are we doing to make sure that they're not getting behind in their schoolwork? And that they're, you know, not losing out from having to be home?
So we still are one-to-one. Teachers still have Canvas pages. We still, now as a part of the Welcome Back to School, remind them how to log on, how to sign in, but there's nothing quite like being in the classroom face-to-face.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Uh, next up is in the section on the, um, math EOGs. I know, I love the fact that the math scores are going up, and this was, you know, across the board. This is beautiful, beautiful data. I know that different math curricula are being used in different schools. Are we seeing any difference in performance between the different programs that are being used and?
So, yeah, so really, we started way back, like twenty sixteen, seventeen, with Eureka, which was the big shift from teaching the algorithms to teaching conceptual understanding. The only shifts that have been made at most schools are going to just the math, Eureka Math Squared, which is just the new version that's taken teacher feedback to improve the content itself. The only schools that are using, um, the illustrative curriculum are the ones that are, either are the expeditionary learning, so like PEC and the robotics and the schools that, they're really like the newer schools or the schools that have a theme that's more like a math STEM-based theme that just started this year. So we're a ways away from being able to say this is better than this. What the research says is pick one, don't let it be the Wild West where teachers are having to Google the lesson plans and teach it with fidelity, and the results will increase at the, at the same scale. There's not anything that weights one higher than the other.
Okay. And then my last question, um, I think Board Member Bellamy Small touched on this a little bit, but the grade-three reading scores, what are we doing to target those students specifically? We know that there are problem children because of their kindergarten and first grade year, but what are our plans to intervene with that grade level specifically?
So schools set individual, um, school improvement plan goals. Dr. Wells and the principal supervisors led that. We focus specific attention on third-grade reading, asking what resources are being put there, making sure that people who are tutoring third-grade reading are trained reading people, not just going to be a buddy.
Not just breathing.
So, I mean, those are some things, is making sure that it's a district focus in terms of improvement. I will tell you, it was a district focus last year. So I think we're just still kind of facing these, these gaps that, that happened in early literacy, and I don't think we'll be done after this.
Yeah, it's a tough group to target. Okay, that is all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. First, I want to say thank you to everyone in GCS that has made, helped to or supported these, um, increases in our learning. Everyone impacts it. Everyone makes a difference down to the custodian all the way up to the top. So I want to thank everyone for that. Absentee, we keep hitting on it. I mean, I have seen it in the workforce. My son just was a graduate in May. And one of the reasons he got one of his job is because he would be in person. Because no one wanted to work, everyone wanted to work remote. So it is a culture thing, and I don't know how we switch it. I have also been involved with parents whose children just do not want to go back. And they have done everything in their power to get that child back into the school system. And so I don't know how we change that at this point. We've got to change it. But, you know, and maybe we've got to try to figure out how to change that mentality back to that, you get more learning. I mean, all the numbers, you know, I've always argued over the chart at the remote charters before we had to go remote, that you, there's a very small percentage of children that excel in that learning environment. And that, that was the way it was. So, um, we are in a difficult, and we need to somehow brainstorm how to change that culture, because I do believe it's a culture at this point. Because I have experienced it, like severely, and where it is just something. So, and if we don't have children in school, they are not going to learn at the level we need them to learn. So anything we can do to try and change that, but it is, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. It is throughout, COVID shifted us, and now we need to shift us back somehow. I don't have the answer. Math one. Our eighth-grade math was in the forty percent range. It's on page forty-two. When I'm looking at the EOGs, um, for twenty, we were in forty-seven percentage, right?
What slide you're on and what you're looking at?
Oh, well, that's not eighth grade. That's, all right, where's eighth grade? Eighth grade is all eighth-grade proficiency. Oh, all right, sixty-six. That's a lot better than what I was thinking. But still, when did they take math one?
So a lot of our students take math one in eighth grade.
Right.
A very few take it in seventh grade. And then everyone else takes it in ninth grade. Students who are taking grade-level math the whole way through take math one as freshmen in high school.
At one time, we were pushing to make sure everyone took math one in middle school because if they come into high school and, all right, there's a sequence in math, all right? And if we don't get cer- certain math by a certain timeframe, you're not going to get through all the math that you need to get through, correct?
That's, well, I mean, you take four math as a graduation requirement, and you can do that in four years in high school.
All right, so, well, it used to be where they made the kids not getting it. They couldn't take it in the first semester, the math one, but we switched that. Right, so, all right, so, but my problem is twenty-three percent in math one. Isn't that what I saw somewhere? Yes. Right, this past year it was.
What slide?
The EOC proficiency in math one. All right. So we've got a seventy, or a sixty-six percent proficiency in math. And then they go into ninth grade, where anyone that hasn't taken math one should have been taking math one, right?
Because anyone who was above grade level in math in fifth grade took math one in middle school. Every student who took on-grade-level math takes math one in high school.
Okay, well, I guess somehow we need to change that number. Okay, that, that would be mine. I mean, because that's a critical gateway in moving into, if you want any, like IT account. I mean, math one is a key, um, subject to get to that higher, more technical level jobs, which pay good money, all right? And having twenty-three percent is just something that we have to work on. And, and what other things, you know, the only other thing, does, does everyone, not everyone has to take math three, right?
So EOC now.
Okay, so everyone has to take math three. So that one also kind of, the two don't correlate to me. You've got twenty-three, and then you've got.
But so, let me try to explain it.
Yes, please.
So you have to be in high school to take math three. So even those kids that took math one in seventh grade, take math three in high school and count towards the high school score. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's helping me understand.
Why it's so different?
Yes, because I'm like, all right, we got a low number in math one, then you jump to math three, and all of a sudden, magic happens, and I got fifty-one percent.
Yeah, so the students who made As in math count in the math three score, but not in the math one score. Okay.
All right, so that helped me on that. And that basically, I'm a math girl, so that didn't correlate for me, so I just was curious. But I appreciate everyone for all the great work they've done this past year and, or the year before, and, and what the great work we're going to do this year in getting our kids moving forward at even a better rate. So, thank you.
Betty. Board Member, um, Linda, I'm glad that magic happened also. I don't have any questions, just have some comments, because normally I try to ask all my questions, um, before the meeting. Looking at the Learning Hub, the High Dose of Tutoring, I can tell you that in talking to some parents and educators, that definitely helps in our fifth quarter, definitely help our students as far as their attendance. I know there are some little trinkets that we can do to assist with, um, students coming to school on a regular basis. And I also know that things we also can do to help our teachers, um, come to school on a regular basis. Because when the kids stay with their teachers out, of course, they want to be out also. They don't want a sub. They want their real teacher. So maybe there's some things we can work on there. The summer graduation, um, is definitely a key. The parents are thrilled to death to see their kids, even though it's not doing their traditional graduation, to see them doing the summer graduation. Looking at our no-shows, I can say personally that social workers and counselors are boots on the ground when it comes to, um, working with no-shows. And that means telephone calls, that mean home visits, that mean looking through your people data form, the little brown sheet, I guess it's still brown, to see who the next person, um, in line as far as, um, relationships. And sometimes, not only if you find in one child, and find out where they are, sometimes you are finding the whole family. You may have five kids in that home. So, um, I say kudos to all the ones that's working with our no-shows, but specifically and especially our social workers and counselors. Thank you all for all you do, and that means for the whole Gifford County School staff, because I know all you all play a part in this to make Gifford County School off the chart as far as being, um, they not a low-performance school anymore. And I also had mentioned that to, um, the council of great city schools, and they, they were delighted to hear that great news. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank everyone. I know this has occurred over years, and it's been a lot of hard work. It's not something that just happened. And while we have a long way to go, it's just incredibly, um, you know, optimistic that we're making some gains. You know, as far as the data, there's just never been a time when we haven't had these racial gaps. I mean, Jill can tell you. I think she's probably seen hundreds of these reports, if not more, over the decades. And it just, and again, no matter what the makeup of the board, no matter what the, the, the district staff and employees, no matter who the superintendent has been, this is just, this is systemic and structural, and it is not something that the school system can or will fix on its own. And the fact that there are restrictions on being able to talk, um, having information and professional development means that it is only going to get worse until we can turn that around. The reason why we have an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is to address the fact that there is no indicator of student well-being or outcomes, where students of color, particularly African-American students, are not on the bottom. And because that is true across performance, um, because of socioeconomic status, and, um, other indicators, says that there is something happening in the system itself that is perpetuating this. And, um, and not that people mean for that to happen. It's the same thing in healthcare. If, if our physicians aren't asking themselves critical questions, if judges aren't asking themselves critical questions about some of the perceptions that they bring to the bench or to, uh, the, the patient or the operating room, then these will continue to perpetuate. So, uh, thank you for all that you can do. Thank you to everyone here for all that you are doing and can do. But it is a much bigger problem than just the, the school system. So, I'm not expecting miracles, but I am absolutely praising, um, all of the hard work. And I do not think this is up to you alone to do this. So, thank you. We are now at a policy committee report, and I will turn to the policy committee chair.
Thank you. At the September thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-three Policy Committee meeting, we voted to send three policy recommendations out for thirty-day public comment from September nineteenth through October nineteenth. The purpose of these policy revisions is to comply with the requirements of, of se- session law twenty-twenty-three dash one-zero-six, uh, S forty-nine, the Pa- Parents' Bill of Rights. The recommendate, the recommended revisions include all policies required to comply with the new law. And they were developed with the input of legal counsel and the North Carolina Board, School Board, uh, Association. The first one is policy thirteen-ten dash slash four-zero-zero-two, Parent Involvement. This policy revision includes updated language regarding, uh, school parental involvement plans, parental communication and notification, as well as new timelines for responses to parents' requests for information. The revised policy also includes a new section describing the method for parents to resolve concerns about, uh, procedures or practices that violate Part Four of Article seven-B of Chapter one-fifteen-C in the General Statute. The second policy to go out for review is policy thirteen-eleven, uh, slash four-zero-zero-three, Parent Notification Withholding Consent. The revision to this policy, uh, added a list that complies, that compiles the activities that require written parental permission, including administering medication, off-campus trips, the participation in surveys containing certain types of protected information. The third policy to go out for, uh, uh, com- public comment is policy thirty-five-forty, School Health Education Program Reproductive Health and Safety Education. This revision incorporates the new state requirement prohibiting instruction of gender identity, sexual activity, and sexuality in the curriculum for grades kindergarten through fourth, fourth grade. It clarifies that curriculum includes the standard course of study and instructional materials, but does not include responses to student-initiated questions, communications, unconnected to the curriculum or other stated protected by, uh, statement. unconnected to the curriculum or other stated protected by, statements protected by law. As a reminder, you can view the revisions in detail in the attachment to the policy committee report in the board agenda and they are found at the GCS website at www.gcs.com backslash page backslash 38823 and on our social media channels after this meeting. These policy recommendations will come back to the board for discussion in our November meeting after the public comment period has expired. Do you want me to go ahead and do the action item?
No, well, this is going out for 30 days.
Yes, yes.
So we are now at the action items and we have Policy 2110 Duties of Officers, Item A.
Okay. This policy is presented to the board for approval. Tonight, we are considering one policy item that was reviewed by the policy committee in August and was published for public comment from August 15th through September 14th. Members of the public who would like to review the policy revisions may do so after tonight's board meeting, on the board meeting agenda. And they have access to it at our website, www.gcsnc.com. I make a motion to adopt the revisions for Policy 2210 Duties of Officers as presented. The background for this is that the revision updates the policy to reflect that our official board policy manual is maintained online. This change is recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association. One comment was received during the public comment period and it is attached to our agenda.
Thank you, is there a second? All right, Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah? Michael? Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of eight to one. We are now at Item B, the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors. We have been asked to, they're seeking nominations for someone to serve a two-year term. I believe Ms. Erby said that she is willing.
And I also indicated.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I also indicated.
Okay, all right, well, if you, Diane said she's also indicated, so whoever wants it more than the other, there will be, I think, three meetings throughout the year, three in person in Raleigh and one virtual. So Diane, if you're interested in serving, Kim, is that okay with you? All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Diane is our nominee for the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors. We are now at voting delegates to the 2023 North Carolina School Board Association Delegates Assembly. And again, we used to make these appointments when someone excuses himself from the room. So, but we have had four people that have offered to serve as a delegate. Diane? Yes, you are one of those. Linda? Kim? Alan scooted back.
I needed a bathroom break, but I stayed in the room deliberately.
Deborah said she'd be an alternate.
Oh, that's right, okay. Anyone else interested? All right, so we have Diane, Linda, Kim, and Deborah. As an alternate. I'm sorry? Okay, so we'll say Alan and then Deborah's the delegate, alternate? How's that feeling, Alan? Okay, so, and that's in Greensboro. Okay, so at the Corey Convention Center usually, right? Okay, so we have Diane, Linda, Kim, and Alan, and then Deborah and Deana will be an alternate as well. In case you can't be an alternate, so you've got two backups. All right.
Who wants it more?
All right, we are now at Item D. Consideration to offer to purchase Irwin Montessori school property.
I make a motion, the Guilford County Board of Education previously declared the property located at 3012 East Vessama Avenue and 101 Dockery Street, Greensboro, North Carolina, commonly referred to as the Irwin Montessori School Property, as surplus property and offered it to the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. The property consists of a combined 8.99 acres. The Commissioners offered to purchase the property for the purchase price of $100,000. I move to accept the offer of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners of $100,000 for purchase of the Irwin Montessori School Property.
Second. All right, say that again, Diane? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. There is no other business, and we are now at Board Member Comments. I'll turn to my left, Board Member Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you very much for doing all that you do for Guilford County School students, that means the staff, families, and the community. I enjoyed myself at Simpkins School where I went over to assist them with the car riders line. And congratulations to Dudley Marching Band of Thunder for participating and receiving the Spirit Award at the Celebration of Excellence. We had a phenomenal time at the first anniversary where we received the grant which you all have already read about. And I know that it'll be spent wisely and we are connecting more with the High Point community. So all I have for tonight, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah.
First up, I'd like to take a moment and say thank you to our board attorney Jill Wilson for your integrity. I spoke to Governor Cooper during the pandemic and commended him on his wisdom in knowing when there were those who are better, better in contact maybe with the subject material and he was willing to step aside and look at Mandy Cohen, Dr. Cohen, and say, this is your area of expertise, you please speak. And I see that same wisdom in you in saying, this is where my area of expertise is not the best. This is where someone else may better serve and I appreciate that genuine wisdom. Thank you to everybody for the positive reports this evening. It was very, very much needed because I will be honest with you. I came into this meeting tonight with a, just a huge sense of futility that I believe is felt across the northern end of the county right now. We are just a huge swath of us feeling the impact of the overreach of state government. Rockingham County is, as many of us know, looking now at having a casino built on the outside of a camp that's meant for children and the siblings of children who are disabled, who are chronically ill, who are diagnosed with things like cancer and in the middle of farmlands. They looked to their zoning board to stand for them and they saw the son of the senator who is supposed to represent them at the state level and push this bill through. He did not stand for them when they requested that he did. They thought they would turn to the judiciary and found the other son of the same senator looking at them in the face. And the loss that's feeling there, that's being felt in Rockingham County right now is echoed hard by the citizens of Summerfield. After years and years of negotiations and trying to work things out, a landowner went to this same senator and requested that nearly 1,000 acres be de-anexed out of the center of the town of Summerfield. And ultimately, recently, and I believe in the last 24 hours, the town of Summerfield capitulated completely because there is nowhere else to go. There was nowhere, there's nothing else to do. And among talking to different senators, different representatives, and seeing the gap in knowledge from what's being told at the state level versus what's actually happening when your boots are on the ground, it's very dramatic and it's disconcerting. But to that end, thank you to Senator Michael Garrett and thank you to Representative Ashton Clemens for always answering their phones. God bless you. And then finally, we have overreach right here on the Board of Education. When you have to rewrite a bill three times to get it done the way you want it, you probably need to proofread for starters. I hope that's part of our curriculum material. So the feeling of futility is much assuaged by knowing that we are making great strides here locally, regardless of whatever else happens. Our students are succeeding, we're coming back in a big way. And I would just beg of everyone who hears this meeting, who's watched this, to support your local government. We are here for you, we are your neighbors, we have kids in these schools, we've raised kids through these schools. And we are your first contact point and we hear you. We hear the majority, we do our best to speak for the majority. We know who you are and we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Michael.
Let's see, it's been a long road to this seat up here. December, I reached out to the school board and I asked to be in the training with Mr. Schraus and Chrissy Pratt. Where would we be if that training had happened? Where would we be if our school board had been better together? We wouldn't have had the legislature stepping in. We wouldn't have people mad at each other, we wouldn't have the anger issues. We wouldn't have had a number of people that came and reached out and spoke tonight. I will say thank you to everyone that reached out and spoke tonight because you're involved in the schools. You're here. There's too many board meetings. I've sat in here and at the end of the meeting, other than people sitting in the front two rows here, there's one or two other people left sitting in the audience because the public is not involved. The public should be involved in the public schools. That's how we get things done. If we're going to be better together, we need to work together. I'd always look forward to being able to work with the school board. Now I look forward to the school board being able to work with me. Thank you.
Kim?
Good evening. I'm just grateful to have had the opportunity to meet my other colleagues from around the nation and just to let you know that you're not alone in this work and that Guilford County is an excellent school district. From the stories that I hear from my other colleagues and board members and struggles and to meet with other superintendents, it is a long road. The bottom line, I know it has to be centered around students. This work is important. Ending the school-to-prison pipeline is about literacy. Making sure our students are prepared for life. That's what this work is about. When politics get too involved, the legislators passing bills that have nothing to do with getting us where we want to be, unfunded mandates continue to happen across the nation, not just here in North Carolina. Unfortunately, we continue to lead the way though with those mandates. So I'm looking forward still in the school year, I'm looking forward to continue to see these accountability reports continue to be better for all of our students. We're going to knuckle down. I know that's what teachers are doing, I know that's what principals are doing. I know that with the restructuring of the accountability with leadership, things are going to happen in Guilford County for us and we will continue to lead the way. That has been my mantra on the national level to my colleagues, the things and the good work that we're doing here in Guilford County. We just know that things need to be funded. We know that things need to be funded. Our teachers need more money to become a teacher. Students are not interested in teaching, unfortunately, because of what is happening that's not student-centered, that's not about them. So why would I want to become a teacher? So those are some of the things I think that our legislators need to think about and to leave education to those that went to school to become educators, those that are the experts. If they would just give us the money, we could show them better than we could actually tell them what we would be able to do and what our educators would be allowed to do. The High Point Community Men's Huddle is proud to host the I Just Want to Be Heard High Point Municipal Candidates Town Hall Forum will take place on Wednesday, September 27th at 6:00 p.m. at the Golden Doors Event Center, 2025 Brentwood Street, High Point, North Carolina. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Asking questions is a healthy process to inform, empower, and engage. I want us to remember the 60th anniversary of the Birmingham bombing and I'm going to call their names, the four little girls that lost their lives. Denise McNair, Addie Mae Collins, Cynthia Wesley, and Carol Robinson. Congratulations to all of our delegates for the Celebration of Excellence. Everybody won. And man, those folks, if they take that kind of energy, if they had that kind of energy at 6 o'clock after working all day, I mean, those were some good folk because they were pumped up and they had people dressed up as donkeys and sharks and some everything. The creativity of our folks astounds me and I just want to say kudos to them for, because I know they take that same level of creativity in their classroom. So if I was in there with that donkey though, I wouldn't learn a thing, I'd be looking at the donkey. But, you know, kudos to them. This is National Hispanic Heritage Month. In this country, we keep saying that we care about each other and that we are, as our superintendent's, her slogan, better together. But at the same time, we're not really doing it well. So I hope as we celebrate these various months that, you know, we realize that it's more than just a, something on a calendar, that we reach out and that we try to learn about, you know, how we are different but yet how we are the same. October the 8th through the 14th is Fire Prevention Week and I wanted to go ahead and bring that up because, you know, we have, we've had some devastating fires that have actually killed some of our students. And the theme for this year is cooking safety. So they're not saying, don't teach your kids to cook, they just wash the stove and make sure that they understand what they're doing as far as safety. BACO, which is Brothers Organized to Serve Others, which was the organization of the late Hank Wall, is still operating in High Point and in Greensboro and they're looking for volunteers. So if you are interested in participating, participating and being a volunteer for BACO, go to Facebook page and, you know, click on that and see how you can help BACO. You know, they, when Hank was alive, they did some phenomenal work, particularly in High Point for 30 years now. So just because he's passed away, the legacy still exists and we want to encourage people to help them and participate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Thank you. I heard during our public comments tonight, the word extremists used at least nine times, according to my tally. And I wanted to share a little story. A couple of years ago, I took my two children, who were both teenagers at the time, to see someone in person who might be considered an extremist by some, not because I particularly supported this person, not because I didn't support this person, but more importantly, because I wanted my kids to learn a really important lesson, which is you need to hear things with your own ears, you need to see things with your own eyes. What you see and hear in person can be very, very different than what is reported in the media and in other places. And I think that's an extremely valuable lesson that we can all take to heart. We have, I do not believe that a school board should be. We have, I do not believe that a school board should be a political event. I have been outspoken about that since the beginning of my campaign. I don't think it should be partisan. I think politics get in the way of the business of taking care of our kids. We've been engaged in a bit of a political circus here for a couple of months. And it's important for people to know that although that has been happening on the surface and being played out in the media, there's a lot happening behind the scenes that people don't see. Every one of us sitting on this board answer phone calls daily, weekly certainly, answer emails, are stepping in to help resolve problems that our students are having, that our parents are having, that our schools are having. And we're working to do a lot of things that the public isn't necessarily seeing. And I think it's important for people to know that and to be able to look behind the curtain a little bit to see what's going on. I'm very encouraged by our improved test scores and all of the hard work that our teachers are doing, our students are doing, our parents are doing, and that even this board is doing. And I hope that we will continue to try to work together to make Guilford County schools be the best they can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
A lot of good. I've been, it's been a very good month, um, that I've been part of, starting with the state of our schools and starting with Southeast High getting the Hubert Humphreys Award. Okay, that's excellent. That's an excellent, um, amazing thing to achieve. And the year before, and I also, you know, Northeast has achieved that. That is what we're about, great achievements. I went to the Celebration of Excellence and all of those individuals up on that stage deserve major kudos for the hard, dedicated, and because they love our students in Guilford County. Kudos to Dr. Reedus. I was, she was at Summit, the, and which was one of my schools at one time, and me and her sat down and talked and we understand, I'm a firm believer in passion and people. I will always take a passionate principal even over one that's more educated, cause passion drives the results. But congratulations to all of them. Congratulations to our Teacher of the Year. So that is great stuff going on. And I also want to say, you know, I don't know, um, Mr. Whitfield personally, but clearly he's a product of our schools and has achieved great things. And he is an example of what all our students with the right direction and drive and support have the opportunity to achieve. We've just got to reach more of them. So I'm very happy that we named, um, have named our basketball court out in Southeast Center here. So I have seen a lot of, and our results as what we're making progress here. All right, we're making progress. We can't, you know, it's kind of like when we get heavy, we can't lose it all in the same day. And it's gonna take, we want to, but you know, it's taken time and, and COVID really has impacted us. So it's gonna take us some time and it's gonna be, we need a steady progress is what we need. We don't need the highs and the lows, we need steady growth. And as long as we can achieve that, we will do very well. So thank you to everyone again. Proud of us, I'm proud of what the system's doing.
Thank you. Alan?
Thank you. A common theme today in our public comments and maybe, uh, for some of us individually in our own minds and sensibilities, was a desire to move forward or to move on. But I think it important to note that as the public narrative certainly moves on, uh, the work of this district never stalled, it never stopped, it never stopped moving. Uh, I appreciate what I heard in Ms. Pratt's comments to that end as well. Uh, we have seen a successful start of the school year with so many efforts that enabled that. I was able to be part of the raising of the beam at Claxton and it was an absolute rush to see what that represents about the forward motion and the implementation of the bond plan. And of course, tonight, all of the work reflected in the comprehensive accountability report, the excellence in preparing and presenting that, but also all the work behind it. Those proficiency numbers, we always want to see higher. It is never our job to be satisfied with those. We'd love to exceed the levels from twenty eighteen and nineteen even. But I think we all have to note the clear, overwhelming, uh, nearly astounding trajectory, the marked improvement in nearly every chart year to year from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. So thank you to our staff, our educators, our leadership for continuing that movement, uh, doing the most that can be done and doing so with so much, working against you, distracting you, uh, even undermining you at times, including a stalled budget process and inadequate resources provided to our less than fully funded schools, including a new Parents' Bill of Rights initiative that I find concerning for the ways that it sows distrust in our teachers and makes our schools decidedly less safe and inclusive for our most vulnerable students, particularly those who are LGBTQ plus. As a board member, I'm committed to join you in the movement forward. And as that relates to the District Three seat, I'd like to review where we've been. From my perspective, we were given a vote, we didn't demand that vote. We were given a vote by an existing statute and we each voted in an attempt to reflect our values and what we felt most faithfully represented active constituents. And then that vote was taken away from us and here we are, and we do absolutely move forward. I will say that to me, that path forward was a bit unclear and muddled. Didn't seem to me there was any action available to this board. And I would like to thank Bill Goble, who not only served, but also stepped aside when he sensed that was what best served the district. I learned of Mr. Goble's resignation just a couple of hours before this meeting, but I do see in it his commitment to be about the main thing in this work and in his words to focus on the important job of educating our children. That was a theme echoed by Bishop Tony Amos, the first comments this evening, who said, that's the most important thing. The most important thing is our children, our children, our families, our teachers. And I am certainly committed to work with every member of this board for them and for that in this district that is not only moving forward, but never stop doing so.
And I add my name to your comments, Pastor Sheraus. And, um, want to add, um, again, congratulations to K. Ron Williams, our Employee of the Month, and Jonathan Maureen Mesa, our Teacher of the Year, so excited about that. I went to the Native American, Guilford Native American Association powwow last weekend, last Friday, and took some Guilford County students and Guilford County parents and the art and the culture and the dance and the traditions, um, are just sacred. And I just, um, want to honor Lonnie and Ruth Revels, who started the Guilford Native American Association, and Jennifer Revels Baxter, who is their daughter, who is leading that now, and thanks to Stephen Bell and Dr. Oakley, um, I know they called, we had so many students that, um, um, wanted to participate in that and the, the district really helped do that. So thank you, Dr. Oakley, for working with the Native Association, Native American Association to make that happen and, um, had lots of Indian tacos and, and, uh, it was just a great time. So, um, thank you. I will continue, Mr. Logan, uh, it's my duty and obligation as the board chair, um, to treat you as a board member. You know, we have, uh, we have differences, um, that I hope we both can acknowledge, um, as we do on this board period, and we will continue to do what we need to do. I think this board is, uh, whether you agree or disagreed, the board has followed the law and has made the decisions that it has the duty and obligation to make and did so again tonight. So, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Wilson. Thank you to Caroline, oh, I meant Mackey, blanking, and her firm, uh, for their assistance. And again, thank you to Bill Goble, who, um, who served and gave this district his all for the time that he was here. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? We're adjourned.